The first person to survive Alzheimer's disease is out there. They're going to hold on to everything the disease steals away. That smile they can't hide. That dance class they love. Every single piece of them is going to make it through. And the Alzheimer's Association is going to make it happen. By funding research. Advancing public policy. And spurring scientific breakthroughs. And by providing local support to those living with the disease and their caregivers. We're easing the burden for all those facing it until we accomplish our goal. Alzheimer's disease has devastated millions of lives. But that's all going to change when we reach the first survivor. But we won't get there without you. Join the fight with the Alzheimer's Association.
Hello, welcome. I'm Annette Clark. I am Family Services Director with the Central and Western Virginia Chapter of the Alzheimer's Association. And on behalf of the Association, I would like to say welcome to the 2020 Conference on Aging, on Alzheimer's disease and dementia. And this is like none other. And we appreciate you taking time out of your very, very busy day to join us. And to be a part of this very special session for those living with dementia. I wanted to give you an opportunity to take a look at some of our sponsors. Our VGEC sponsorship. And then the others that you see on the slide. We could not do it without the support of these great sponsors. So thank you very much to all of those. I want to take just a few minutes to introduce you to some of our great presenters that we have on target today. And we have Katie McDonough, Taylor Lee, and Denise Butler. But I also wanted to have an opportunity to do a poll with you before we get started. So Tina, are you going to put up that poll? Thank you so much. Now, for those of you who are new to this, you'll have an opportunity to just answer a couple of questions. And you'll see how to do it. But the first poll question is, this is my first time attending a conference hosted by the Greater Richmond Chapter. Would that be a yes or a no for your attendees? Take, take a minute now and answer that one. Oh, this is not your first time. Okay, well, we are thrilled to have you joining us again today. And I hope that means that you always find the sessions informative and educational. And you want to keep coming back for more. For the others, thank you for being new with us. Okay? Tina, is there another poll question you want to ask? Certainly is. Give us a status. What would you best identify with those choices on the screen? I'll give you just a minute to respond to those. All right, Tina, we've got results of that yet? Okay. For those that identify with other, if you wouldn't mind, just put your answer, what, what you do identify with in the chat box. So we can get a good idea about the attendees that are with us today. And we will have staff members that are monitoring that chat session. So if you want to drop any questions or comments in there, that would be great. And we will try to take those questions at the very end. Okay, great, I see some of you putting some answers in now. Thank you so much for doing that. So before we get started, what I'd like to do is to give each of our speakers just opportunity to introduce themselves. And so I will start out with Taylor.
Good morning, everyone. I am a care consultant and I work to provide care and support to the Greater Richmond area. I have been with the Association for almost four years. And I work a lot with persons living with dementia to connect them with programs, services, and also activities. So it is my honor to speak with you all today and I welcome you all.
Thank you, Taylor, for joining us today and to share your expertise. Next, we have Katie. Katie, would you like to tell us just a little bit about yourself?
Good morning or almost afternoon, everyone. My name is Katie McDonough and I'm the Director of Programs and Services for the Southeastern Virginia Chapter of the Alzheimer's Association. I've also served as a Director of Social Work for a local program for all-inclusive care of the elderly. And also the Executive Director of an Aging in Place model in DC called Capitol Hill Village. And I think as you'll hear today, my mantra as a professional is to help individuals live productive and meaningful lives in later life, regardless of physical or cognitive changes. So we'll be talking a lot about that.
I can't wait, Katie. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for being here to share your expertise. All right, next up, we have Denise. And Denise is going to introduce herself and then she's going to get the program started. Denise, I think you're muted.
As well as I did not mute myself. Okay. My name is Denise Butler and I work for the Riverside Center for Excellence in Aging and Life on Health. And I oversee a geriatric assessment clinic here. As well as I am part of a interdisciplinary team and that works in a memory care clinic and a neurology practice in Hampton with Riverside. So we're a lot of different hats and I enjoy each and every one of them. I've also worked a lot, especially with people living with that early stage of dementia. And working with their care partners as well. And was part of a facilitated the early stage support group, which was EASE at one time. And it became peers and partners. And learned so much from the participants, much more than I could learn from any lecture or book. So I had definitely have a passion for this and working with people at all stages of dementia, but especially early stage. Because it really is so special and there's so many things that you can do and put into place. So let me, um, let's go ahead and go to the first slide. Okay, so one of the things I want to talk about, and many of you have already received a diagnosis, but, and I don't know what your experience is like, but I always like to circle back to this in the beginning. When I, especially when I'm seeing people for the first time, that dignified diagnosis is so important for all of us. And this principle's written is a first statement. And it dates back to on the subject of an Alzheimer's diagnosis. And I think this is true of any dementia diagnosis, not just for Alzheimer's. So can I get the next slide, please? So 2008, this was crafted and created. We're now in 2020. I'd like to think that these principles have been instituted in the meantime. Unfortunately, and I'm sure some of you have this, this experience, this is not always the case. So I'd like us to go to the next slide and talk about those principles. These principles are from people who are, were living with, are living with, were living with, are living with dementia. And how do you make that experience better? Okay, next slide. So here we go. Talk to me directly, the person with dementia. We didn't ask for a poll question on this, but you know, I would want, be interested to find out how many of you, when you receive the diagnosis, were not to talk to directly. It was the family member. How many felt like they told you the truth about that diagnosis? Very important, tell me the truth. I need to know how to prepare for this. This is a, this is a life changer, this is a game changer. Get tested early. You know? If you suspect something might be a little bit different, get it checked out. The earlier, the better. You, if it is, if it is a diagnosis of dementia, then you can, you have time to put things in place and have a voice in what you're, what is going to happen. What you're, don't wait, don't put it off. Get it checked out. If you don't get it checked out, you're not going to know. It doesn't change it. Not knowing doesn't change this. Okay. Take my concerns seriously, regardless of my age. And I'm sure for people that have received this diagnosis in their 40s. They may have received that reaction, well, you couldn't pop, this could possibly happen to you. You're too young. As we know, dementia does not discriminate on the basis of age. Deliver the news in plain but sensitive language. Okay, so we know that some physicians really don't know how to put things in simple, in terms that we can understand. And are not always as sensitive. Think about, and what I'd like for everybody to think about when we're in this profession of delivering this information. Give it to people in plain language, but be sensitive about it. I'll share with you with my father-in-law who had dementia of the Alzheimer's type. It was, yeah, you have dementia. Here's your prescription for Arescept, see in six months. That is not where we should be. We should be farther along than that these days. Coordinate with other care providers. Um, again, I find this kind of astounding that even today, that the person who is delivered the diagnosis, that information is not necessarily going to the other care providers, to the primary care doctor. How is that possible? I don't know, but it does still happen. Okay, so when you're going in and you're having a workup, how many people did they take time when they said, I'm going to order this lab work? I'm going to order a PET scan or an MRI or whatever head scan they order. And I'm going to send you for neuropsych testing. Did anybody sit down and explain to you why we need to do that? We need to make sure, I need this lab work because I need to rule out if you have a vitamin B12 deficiency. That could cause, be causing some problems with your cognition. I need to take, get a complete metabolic panel, complete blood count to see what else could be at work here. This is what an MRI is going to help tell us, it's going to help inform. This is why I'm sending you for neuropsychological testing. Go, explain to me what it is and what you're hoping to find when you, when you're ordering this test. Don't, oh, just order the test and not tell me what they're for and leave me in suspense. Give me the tools for living with this. Give me the strategies. Give me the ways of managing this. Work with me on a plan for healthy living. Life still makes a difference. And one of the basic things is what's good for your heart is good for your, is good for your, for your head. Your heart and head are not that far apart. Recognize I'm an individual and the way I experience this is unique. I might have 16 brothers and sisters, but I'm, I am my own person. I've had my own life experience. Get to know me, get to know what matters with me. Alzheimer's dementia is a journey. It's not a destination. It does not define who you are as a person. It is part of who you are, but it does not define you. This is another important thing. How do you share that diagnosis? And again, I think this is very different for everything, for everybody and what they want. What is it you would like people to know about you? What, I've still me, I still like playing cards, I still like going fishing, I still enjoy. Whatever it is that you enjoy, that hasn't changed. Think about, so what I've had told to me from people that, when they're receiving the diagnosis, all you hear is the word, Alzheimer's or dementia, and everything else shuts down. You don't hear anything, anything else. So you're educating yourself and the people you're sharing this diagnosis with is really important. You may hear from them, ah, you seem fine to me. Or I forget things a lot. That was one of the things that one of the people I worked with would really upset her. It's like you're not hearing what I'm telling you. They might have a lot of misconceptions about what dementia is. So the best you can do is just be honest and provide that information. It's going to be, go a long way to help people understand where you are and what you're going through. Next slide. Okay, this is hard. How do you share that diagnosis? Some people don't want to share it. I'm, a lot of times people are already aware, they have a sense, something's a little bit different. Something is not the way it used to be, but they haven't put a name to it. Think about this, if you're afraid of informing others that this is going to be a burden on them, keeping that diagnosis a secret is going to be really draining for you, having to act like everything is okay. People will surprise you in how supportive they can be. The sooner you tell your family and friends, the sooner they can keep, they can give you that support. Helping the educator, you'll become an advocate, not just for yourself, but for everybody else who's living with this through this process. I firmly believe that. Everybody's going to have a different reaction. Share resources. There's a lot of great educational material out there. Alzheimer's Association has terrific information. Another source I really like a lot is Tifa Snow. She's an expert in dementia care, caregiving, care, being a care partner. She's got a wonderful website with a lot of really good information. The other thing that I really, I've discovered and I really have liked using a lot with people who are living, especially in the early stage, is in Canada, the University of Waterloo, through their memory Alzheimer's, Murray Alzheimer's Research Project, has a whole series of documents called Bias and Force. And they were put together with, by people who are living with dementia. And cover a lot of different aspects of it. Living safely, leisure, dealing with the grief, because you're dealing with grief and loss of things that are changing. Food and mealtime, living, and this is one of my favorites. And it's living and celebrating life through leisure. You, we are still people, we're still going to enjoy our life. And that's, I think, unfortunately, one of the things. There, they have information on memory workouts, um, safety when you're out and about. So if you don't get a chance to check this out, um, I think if you needed the information, I'm happy to, to share that with you. Let family and friends know about local support quiz. Most important of all. And next, I'm sorry, go ahead, go to the next slide. Most important of all, you are a person, you're not a diagnosis. This does not define who you are. And thank you guys so much for letting me share.
Good morning again. Thank you again, Denise, for that presentation. I don't think I could have asked you to put up a more succinct slide with what we're about to talk about today. Because I really want to talk about the concept of personhood. But Denise said, what makes us who we are? And how we can honor that through the various stages of dementia. All right, so before we dive in, I want to be able to look at what is our traditional lens around dementia? And if you look, I'm a very visual person. So if you look to the pictures on the right-hand side of the screen, those pictures may evoke some feelings, much like feelings that I have. When I look at these pictures, I think of loss. I think of frustration. I think of sadness, right? And certainly, those are feelings that we experience when we're diagnosed with Alzheimer's, when we are going through the various stages and experiencing the symptoms. But very often, that's all we see. That's the only lens we have. And a lot of that is because of the stigma related to the disease. And why do we have stigma? Most often because we have a real lack of understanding of the disease. And we have, we don't talk about it, right? If you don't talk about something, you don't learn about it. If you don't learn about it, we can't normalize it. Often, this lens causes us to use words like patient, inflicted, diagnosed. And we begin very quickly to define an individual immediately by their deficits that are caused by whatever type of dementia that they're experiencing. So what is personhood? The official definition is the state or condition of being a person, especially having to do with those qualities that identify distinct individuality. So put simply, personhood is what makes me me. It's what makes you you, right? It's not constant. It changes throughout the lifespan. I don't know about you, but I'm a very different person than I was 20 years ago. And I hope that I'm a very different person than I am in 20 years than I am now. We also know that our culture, particularly Western culture, defines who we are very much based on achievement. What we're able to cognitively master, right? And when that is the case, and when you take dementia and you set it up against a personhood that is defined primarily by cognitive ability, we're going to see that we define personhood in a declining nature, right? Because that is what we're very much focused on in how we see ourselves and our, and our worth. So let's see, just, this is an example of how someone would, someone who is living with dementia describes that experience. Upon diagnosis, people think that you have lost your intelligence and you no longer have any of the knowledge you have attained over the years. They no longer ask your advice on anything. They talk to you. They talk, they talk, they no longer ask you advice. They talk to the person you are and not you. I know Denise mentioned that as part of the diagnosis. People can overprotect you, which robs you of your independence much quicker. It should be a gradual process that is ongoing and care should be adjusted to the changes. People avoid conversations once you start showing you are having a word or thought retrieval problem. And certainly, we hear that kind of experience from many people who are living with, living with dementia. So I just want to stop on this slide briefly, just to kind of show a snapshot of how our community has responded to those who have physical disabilities. Now, although we have, still have a long way to go to be inclusive and to adapt our communities for those with physical disabilities, we've certainly come a long way over the decades. And as you can see here, these images show people with physical disabilities going throughout their life, doing things that those without those disabilities would be able to do. And we've done this through a really intentional process. But as we hear from those who are living with dementia, that's not necessarily the case with cognitive impairment. And that's the shift we want to make. That's the world we want to live in, where people can continue to define themselves in all the different ways they have throughout life, despite a cognitive impairment. So before we move on, I just want to mention to you all that I completely understand the frustration and the reality of loss with dementia. I have experienced it in my own family and currently in experiencing in my own family. And certainly have worked with folks over the years and understand what that looks like. This is not to negate losses, it's not to negate frustration. It's not to say that isn't real and a real part of the experience. But merely looking at ourselves in this way gives us a different way to understand and a different lens in which to look at the disease and how we respond to it. So let's look at personhood. What makes us, us, who we are? So we've already talked about, one aspect of our personhood is achievement. Another is what we call interdependence. Social identity. Spiritual identity. Physical identity. And creative identity. So let's walk briefly through each of these. So again, we talked about achievement. It's focused on what we do, what we've accomplished either throughout life or what we can accomplish in day-to-day life. It's very goal-oriented. It's certainly how we define ourselves very much in Western culture. You know, an example is, you know, I lived in DC for many, many years. And it's an old joke in DC that when you introduce yourself, first you say your name and immediately you ask the other person what they do for a living, right? People in DC are, tend to be very achievement-oriented, very career-oriented. And that certainly is a reflection of our larger culture. But when we over-focus on this, we forget all of the other things that make us who we are, which can get in the way of those who are living with dementia and continuing to be who they are throughout that disease process. So some other ways that we identify who we are is in our concept of interdependence. It is a very common myth in our culture that we are independent at any stage of our life. Certainly, we can see interdependence in early life, in the early stages. We can see it with many of us in the late stages of our life. But we tend to think in those middle years, we're independent. We don't need anyone else, right? And that's our goal, is to become independent. But really, we're consistently relying on other people to be well and healthy, to get, get food on the table, to drive our cars. We could never really truly be independent and be successful and functional in life. And so if we look more at ourselves throughout our lifespan as being interdependent, that whole concept of losing independence or having to be more dependent on someone in the later stages of the disease can certainly be alleviated. We have social identity. So we are, we are who we are because of who we are to others. We are grandparents, we are spouses, we are friends, right? So many times when we see someone who is moving through those stages of dementia, even in those early stages, we see them draw back, right? We see them begin to social isolate. Because those who knew them as they were throughout their lives, don't see them through that lens anymore. So what would it look like if we adapted ourselves to be more effective socially with those who have dementia, right? If we could respond more positively, if we could change our lens and continue to interact as we have, adjusting for the needs of that person. Spiritual identity. Many of us, even if we're not religious, we have a way of connecting with something greater than ourselves, right? It is a basic human need to be connected to one another. And I often ask is, could it be possible for someone who's living with the disease to even be more spiritually connected than we are, right? Because as we say, people who are living with dementia often live in the moment. And are they more capable of connecting to that spiritual part of them? Because they, they are living in the moment, wherever they are in that process. We are also very creative beings, even if we're not artists. We live to create. And that I have seen in an early-stage art program that we host here locally, that one individual said to me, if I didn't have dementia, I would have never come to this art-making program. And now because of my dementia, I've become an artist. I would never, would have become an artist if it weren't the case. And so certainly, being able to connect to our creative minds, that can continue, whether it's through music, whether it's through dance, whether it's through visual arts. That ability cannot only continue, but it can begin even in those late stages of the disease. And our physical identity, right? Our bodies that we use that are able to help us in our identity. Our physical abilities may change with the disease. And we may need to adapt how we accomplish things. But we're very much still able to engage, whether it's through the ballroom dancing program that we host. Or I've even seen participants in choirs who are living with dementia. who are living with dementia in the early and middle stages. So, certainly, how can we continue to develop and support that physical identity? So, if we look at, if we compare this photo here to the photo we saw of those living with physical disabilities, this is the vision, right? This is the vision for those who are living with cognitive challenges, memory challenges, Alzheimer's or any type of dementia. We want to make sure that we are creating a space where these individuals can fully integrate. They can continue to experience the social, the creative, the spiritual throughout the disease process. So, certainly, we have these programs available through the Alzheimer's Association. You can go to our community resource finder to learn more. Many of these programs are being provided virtually, so you can join from across the nation. Riverside's Memory Cafes, you can find out more through the Centers for Excellence in Aging and Lifelong Health. And there are also several library systems, including Virginia Beach Public Library Systems. There are memory cafes going on. So, I would encourage you to reach out, find opportunities in your community to be able to engage. And I hope that this information was helpful in just creating a little bit of a new lens on how to move through the disease process while honoring people and honoring who they are.
Thanks, Katie. That was great. And I think that's a perfect segue to what it is that I'm going to be talking to the group today about. So, I'm going to go back to this slide. So, what I'm going to be talking to you all about today is that it's entitled "Social Engagement for a Socially Distant World." And I think what is something that Katie has talked about as well as Denise is that when we started to feel the impact of COVID-19, it kind of all threw us all off. And so, we all had to make some really fast transitions. So, I found this quote that I thought was very befitting. So, the quote says, "Sometimes life changes in an instant. We can't always prepare, but we can control how we respond." So, some ways in which we can do that are going to be talked about today. So, before we kind of talk about ways that we can be socially connected, I wanted to kind of talk about the difference between social isolation and social distancing, which we kind of heard a little bit about today. But with social isolation, it kind of means being completely removed from the world. So, that could be through socially, through media, just being completely away from everything and everyone else. But with social distancing, it kind of means to having to remove ourselves slightly just so that we can all remain safe. But we can also find ways to engage and stay very active and stimulated at home. So, there is a difference, and it kind of appears to me that maybe social isolation is a little bit more negative, where we're completely removed. But social distancing is more of an alternative to being connected. So, the risk of disconnecting socially for anyone, it could, it could impact us with our cognition. It can impact us with our medical health and then also with our mental health. So, some examples of that could be very simple, and they are listed. So, we could experience an increase in blood pressure. We can have elevated stress, which we all probably have experienced a little bit of that with this transition. We can have changes with our autoimmune system and then just experiencing more loneliness, which then ultimately can lead to some depression. And then the effects that that may have on someone living with dementia could be compounded. So, with that, we can start to see a disruption in our routine, which is very useful and important for someone living with dementia, where you kind of get those interactions socially. And so, that could be very significant. And with that, with that particular change, we could start to see some increase in different behaviors. So, it could be an increase in frustration or agitation. And then that ultimately can lead to some changes in our functionality. And then ultimately, it means just social withdrawal, which can lead to maybe some lack of confidence in engaging with others socially or, you know, so that is very, is something that we need to take in consideration. So, while those things may seem to be a little bit negative, there are ways that we can stay motivated and connected. So, I kind of put together some examples of how you can do that. And many of these you all may have participated in, but I wanted to shed light on it. So, the first thing is that we can, we can participate in video calls with friends and family, which is something that many of us have probably already started to do. But some platforms that you can use to do that would be Google Hangout, the Zoom platform, which is what we're using now. You can use Skype, and then you can use some other kind of like specialty programs or platforms like House Party, which allows you to kind of have a virtual party with friends or those that you are close with. And then it also has like these special features that you can use, which can always be fun. And then the last is something called Netflix Parties, which is something that I just found out about. But it's actually kind of cool where you can watch a movie with your loved ones or those that you're close to and then kind of interact with them while you're watching it. So, it doesn't kind of seem like you are, you know, alone on your couch watching a movie. You can kind of entertain and engage other people in that process. You can also join online social clubs. So, you can host a virtual party or a virtual happy hour, which is, you know, doing something that you like to do amongst other people. You can take an online class or course. So, you can always look up what are some opportunities for that. And I think that that's equally important because it helps you to kind of build your skill as well as allow for some more stimulation. So, that's a tool that you can use. There are also websites that you can use to participate in online board games. So, you can actually be playing a board game along with somebody else. And so, an example of that would be the Board Game Arena, which is a really good website. You can join online fitness communities, which is kind of the picture that we have here, where a group of people got together to work out. So, they are kind of increasing that heart rate, which we know that is important, but they're doing it together. And you can find that within your gyms, so your gym community. If you already belong to a gym, many of them have put their workouts online, and they can either be live or recorded. And then you can also use something as simple as YouTube to kind of get some of those pre-recorded exercises and maybe engage those that are already in your home or do it virtually with others. And then I think something that's impressive is doing things that are a little bit more creative at home. So, maybe things that you didn't necessarily do prior to all of the changes that we've had to go through. So, I have gave the example of maybe doing a home spa day, which seems a little odd, but could be very fun depending on how much you've kind of put into that. And then lastly, you can take on some new projects around the house. So, maybe start some different crafts and maybe get to some home improvement, things that we maybe didn't have a chance to do before. So, those are some examples. And then I also wanted to give you all some options to come to our website to find more options. So, we created a campaign probably in March or later that really kind of helped families identify ways that they can engage with each other at home. So, our stay-at-home activities are kind of like newsletters or worksheets that you can get from our website. And it has some different activities that you can do in person. It has some printable activities, so crossword puzzles, word searches and things of that nature that you can actually do online or print it off. Work on. And then the last is you can kind of be connected with a virtual museum. So, there are many places and museums that are, or a virtual tour, I should say. There are many places that we all may not have gotten a chance to go to in real time, but we can always take a virtual tour and kind of make being at home a little bit more exciting by kind of seeing different things that maybe we couldn't see in person. And then lastly, you can also go to our website to be connected in other ways. So, we have education programs that we offer throughout the month that is constantly changing. So, I encourage you to do that. But then there are also a number of support groups that you may find to be beneficial. And many of those support groups are for individuals living with dementia. And then you can also bring your caregiver or care partner, which, and it's considered a dual group. So, you, the person living with dementia would be in one group, and then their care partners would be in the other, which is beneficial because you kind of get a different group that offers a different perspective and then also kind of gives you a way to connect with others. And then lastly, and I think Katie kind of mentioned this, is participating in a memory cafe, which allows you to kind of get some education, connect with others socially, but also kind of build some more resources, so being connected to community resources. So, those are some examples of ways that we can all stay connected at home. And it doesn't necessarily have to be where we are socially isolated. It just means that we have to keep our safe distance and really try to find creative ways to stay stimulated, but also connected while we're at home.
So, now we're going to take some questions from you all. So, at the very bottom of your screen, you'll see a chat box. And you can type your question in the chat box. Or if you're not able to do that, just kind of wave your hands and we can unmute you and we can go ahead and take your questions. I'm going to turn it over to Jessica. Do we have any questions in the chat box?
We do have a couple. We've had some questions about where to get testing. What kind of tests are involved? What are the lab work that's going to be? Where do I get started? A lot of questions about that.
Denise?
Let me unmute myself here. Okay. So, there are different ways that you can look at getting, go about getting a diagnosis. One is to go to where a place like we have here, which does comprehensive geriatric assessment. Even though we're not a memory care clinic, the main reason people do come to us is because there've been concerns about changes in memory and/or behavior. They're not sure what's going on. So, coming in for a complete conference of geriatric assessments, one way to go. We're in Williamsburg. EBMS down in Norfolk also has one that's run by Dr. Corvay, who's fabulous. VCU also runs a clinic, I believe. UVA has one. I think there were one of five in the state. You could also work through your primary care doctor to begin with. And they may know of a place to refer you, depending on where you are in the state. Neurology can do a workup as well. I tend to lead towards more going to a comprehensive geriatric assessment clinic because they're going to be looking at you from a lot of different perspectives, which is what we're doing. It's not just one thing. The lab work that I mentioned, we're looking at primarily all are connected to memory and sometimes even behavior. Sometimes when B12 levels are really low, it affects not just cognition. It can cause fatigue, and in some people, it can actually cause some behavior problems. It's a little bit on the rarer side. But we want to take a look. What we're looking for in a head scan is the acute findings. Do we see any fluid on the brain that could be extra fluid that could be causing problems? Is there evidence of vascular changes, a stroke, a lot of little strokes? Is there a mass, a tumor, or a bleed in there? So, we're looking for the things, that rule in and rule out, what's actually going on. Another thing that we do in our clinic is we have a pharmacist as part of our team. And they are looking at the medication review to make sure just not, not just what you're taking is appropriate for age and condition. Are you taking something that could be causing some memory problems? And that is not just prescription medication. That is over the counter as well. There's a whole list called the beers list, which is named for a gentleman whose name was beers. It's not named for the beverage. If you're 65 or older, there are medications, again, both prescription and over the counter, that you really need to think about avoiding. So, that's why I tend to go towards a comprehensive assessment because they're going to be looking at you from a lot of different angles. Your health history, your social history, all of these things play an important role. So, again, that more holistic approach for me, and of course, I have a bias because this is what I do, is much better. Understanding who you are as a person is important here. How much, you know, do we have a history of depression, anxiety? What else is playing a role on this? So, it's not just one thing. It's several things. And I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Denise. Jessica?
There is another question. Somebody asked if you could explain a little bit more. What's the memory cafe? What do we do there? How do we get connected with that? Describe it a little bit more.
Katie, Taylor?
Well, I'll just say, I've heard the old saying, "If you've seen one memory cafe, you've seen one memory cafe." They are certainly opportunities for those in the early stages of Alzheimer's to socialize with one another. But what those type of activities look like can vary depending on the nature of the program, depending on what are the interests of the participants. But it's, the whole purpose of a memory cafe is really to bring those who are living, living with a diagnosis and their care partners together to do something that brings joy, that brings purpose, that helps with creativity, that helps build relationships and help them socialize. And, you know, as a part of that, have that ongoing support of one another, that community around, around the disease. So, I'm sure Taylor and maybe even Denise might want to add some specifics about different activities for the memory cafes.
No, I would, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, I would agree completely, and each cafe is very different. But if you wanted to get more information of how to connect with a cafe, you could always visit our website and get that information as far as how to log in and days and times in which that takes place.
Also, we started Memory Cafe here in Williamsburg, 2014, 2015. And to their point, every memory cafe is different. Our memory cafe welcomes all levels of people living with dementia. It's not just for early stage. And what we found is we tried offering activities, and people just prefer to be together, talk, share coffee, you know, and a brownie or whatever. And that's what's, that's what his work was best for our population in Williamsburg. And then we also expanded it a couple of years, a year and a half ago to the York County Library as part of our grant expense. Obviously, we're not needing a person now, but we do offer a virtual memory cafe that meets twice a month. And if you're interested, you can contact me at the Center for Excellence in Aging or go to our website as well, and there will be information on there that will help, help you connect to that. It's a, it's just an incredibly inspiring. And our philosophy for our memory cafes is that we, it's a socialization opportunity. You're with everybody. There's no judgment. Everybody is going through the same thing. So, it's not a support group, and it's not rest. But it is an opportunity to be with other folks.
Jessica?
So, that leads to the million-dollar question about any idea when memory cafes may start up again in person?
Nope, I'm not guessing.
Crickets from everybody.
I would say from the Alzheimer's Association perspective that we really don't have, you know, we're watching this just like everyone else. I'll tell you that the Alzheimer's Association takes very seriously the health and safety of those who are constituents and participating in our programs and certainly taking into consideration the elevated risk for many of those. So, we will certainly let you know when that happens. But for the time being, we will remain virtual. And, you know, I'll tell And, you know, I'll tell you that there are challenges for some in connecting virtually, but what we are able to do it, it is really phenomenal to be able to see that connection continue to happen, and it is happening. So I encourage you, even if you're a little nervous about the technology, to give it a try. And if it doesn't work the first time, try it again and reach out to us because we're happy to help you and walk through that with you.
Thanks, Katie. I have another question. Has anybody mentioned Alts Connected and what that means and how folks can use that?
Yeah, I can take it. So Alts Connected is our online message board communities that allow both those living with the diagnosis and their care partners to connect with each other. So this can be anybody from anywhere. It can be across the country, across the world. It doesn't really matter, but it really gives you the opportunity to go into a space where you can ask questions and your peers can give you feedback. So it's almost like an on-demand virtual support group, right? Where you're not necessarily talking to each other, but you're giving that advice back and forth. And as we say in the support groups, the people who are the experts at this are the people who are going through it, right? And when you're in a support group, or when you're in something like Alts Connected, you know, sharing, you know, emotional support is incredibly important to that work, but a lot of what goes on in those interactions is practical knowledge, practical approaches on how to handle different issues. So that's just one more way that if you want to connect, it's available to you.
Perfect. And now we're going to see if our colleague Jane is on the line, and we're going to ask her to give us a few updates, and then we'll have this incredible panel to come back and give you final remarks and tell you how you can connect with them.
Thanks so much, Tina. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, I'm really excited to talk to you about the Walk to End Alzheimer's. The Walk is the Alzheimer's Association's largest event to raise both awareness and funds for Alzheimer's research, programs, and services. Walk to End Alzheimer's, I'm excited to say, is happening, and while the world may feel like it's been on hold, that we all know that, the threat of Alzheimer's disease has not been. That's why this year's walk is happening everywhere. Walk can happen on any street, led by anyone, because Walk to End Alzheimer's isn't just an event, it's a movement, and you can join right now. While we won't be gathering in person for safety reasons, your local walk date will still be your walk date. We'll have an online local kickoff and Promise Garden ceremony, and then teams will walk safely with their families, friends, neighbors, teams in their own neighborhoods. We encourage all of you attending today to get involved with Walk 2020. So be sure to check out the new Walk resources at ALZ.org/Walk and share them with everyone you know. You will have access to your own participant center once you register, and it's filled with lots of great fundraising ideas to help you raise funds and awareness for Alzheimer's. You can register today at ALZ.org/Walk to find the walk nearest to you. Our second event we offer is called The Longest Day. The Longest Day is the day with the most light, the summer solstice. On June 20th, people from across the world will fight the darkness of Alzheimer's through a fundraising activity of their choice. You can turn your passion into a purpose. Our participants do everything from climb mountains, bake cupcakes, ride their bicycles, perform music, play their favorite sports on the longest day. Get inspired with fun ideas you can do at home or contact us for help. Whether you're participating at home, online, or in person, again, plenty of great fun ideas to engage family and friends. Registration is now open for The Longest Day for 2021, and you can register today at Thanks.
Thank you. Now I'll turn it over to Taylor.
Our helpline is, and so now I'll talk to you about resources. Our 24/7 helpline is available all year and around the clock to provide telephonic support to the public, persons living with dementia, and families. Support is provided by trained specialists and master's-level clinicians. All calls are confidential and can aid families in crisis, provide education, be a connector to programs, services, and community resources. Our helpline staff work diligently to help callers in their preferred language through our bilingual staff and translation services. We encourage you to use the 24/7 helpline as an added tool in your toolbox to support the needs of all those who are impacted by a form of...
Thank you, Taylor. And on your screen now are a few of our upcoming events. Later this afternoon, we will have our Diversity and Inclusion Panel conversation, taking a look at different communities and different populations. Our panel will then help us better understand how dementia is impacting those communities. The conference will then pick up again next week, and we will have a session for professional caregivers, then a session for family caregivers, building up your toolbox. Then in October, we will be hosting a Memory Care University webinar series. Every Wednesday in October, we will have a different session. The first session, "You Can't Keep a Good Woman Down: The Impact of Alzheimer's Disease on Women Caregivers." Then, "Family, Faith, and Dementia." Next, "Having the Talk: Tips for Difficult Conversations, Hospice, Driving, and Intimacy." And lastly, our colleague Kristi Jensen, also from the Riverside Center for Excellence, "Staying Socially Connected in a Socially Distant World." I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our sponsors for sponsoring this event, giving us an opportunity to bring this virtual conference to you at no cost. We'll now have final remarks from our three presenters. Katie?
Well, again, I just appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I encourage you all to, I can send out those slides and encourage you all to kind of consider that lens of personhood, consider that lens of empowerment and finding strengths even despite the challenges of this disease, and certainly reach out. We want to make sure that, you know, you are connected. We know that, you know, in a perfect world, in a pre-COVID world, post-COVID world, it's already social isolate, we already experience social isolation as it relates to a diagnosis of dementia. So we want to make sure that we don't add to that through, in this COVID world. So please reach out. We'd love to get you connected and love to get folks involved in all that we have going on in the community of those who are living with Alzheimer's and their care partners.
Perfect. Taylor?
Just wanted to remind everyone to be socially distanced doesn't mean that you have to be socially isolated. So please take advantage of all of the resources that we provided today and try to be creative at this time to kind of remain that connectiveness with the world. So it was a pleasure speaking with you all today.
And Taylor and Katie, can you put your email addresses in the chat box so that folks know how to find you? Denise?
Just thank you guys for allowing me to be part of this panel and being able to talk about something that I'm very passionate about, and the opportunity just to share this information with everybody. Thanks again.
Yes. And Denise, can you put in there the information from, that you shared about the resource in Canada as well as...
I think it's already, I sent it to Rachel, and it's already up in the chat box.
Perfect, perfect, perfect. Katie, any upcoming events down in your area that you want to let folks know about?
Yeah, one in particular, we have our Art Matters Program that is launching on the 25th, I believe, yep, next Friday. It is a partnership with the Chrysler Museum of Art, which is our fine arts museum here locally. We will be doing virtual tours of their galleries and have some really cool permanent gallery tours as well as temporary gallery tours. So if you, you can email me, you can go to our website, our chapter website, at ALZ.org/steva if you'd like more information on how to register for that program.
Perfect. Taylor, can you tell the folks real quickly about the Families Program?
So the Families Program is a program provided to caregivers and families to kind of provide that added support. And the way that it works is that the caregiver or care partner would receive two individual counseling sessions, and then the family as a whole would receive four counseling sessions. And it's just a way to kind of build your skills, be aware of community resources, and kind of help plan for the future.
Perfect. Thank you all so very much. We're going to take a break, and we'll come back at 1 o'clock for our afternoon sessions. Thank you, presenters. Great job.